Congratulations.
I'm glad you're pleased to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Dave.
I gotta drop these bills off real quick so I don't lose.
So you don't forget?
Okay, we have the agenda before. Is there any additions to agenda or corrections?
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Okay, next we have is approval of the minutes. Very dashed your agenda.
There's no additions or corrections, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes from last week.
Yeah, I'd assume everything is okay there with the legal descriptions and everything. With all the legal legalese with that.
I just copied and pasted.
It read like.
I'll second that motion.
It read like it was.
Yeah, it needs to be.
Alright, it's been moved in second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Okay Dave.
Drains.
More drains?
More drains, yeah. He's been a ban our year for drains.
I have one for you too.
Yeah?
See if you've got one. On it.
From a tiling contractor last week, that there was a broken tile where that circle is roughly. Last year NRCS did some waterway work in conjunction with the landowner Michelson's there. On this tile line, a yellow line is the actual location of the tile that was spotted by GPS coordinates. I think the contractor was digging up tile through there and he came through and he tore out a bunch of trees adjacent to an acreage, both in and outside of the acreage line there, next to that circle where the broken tiles are. And you can see the red line was where the tile was drawn on the map or transposed from the map onto the aerial photo. And kind of misses it up there around the circle and it also misses it worse down there on the east end of the farm there. It probably misses it by three hundred feet there. The scale's one inch to four hundred. Anyway, this broken tile, don't really know what to do. It was probably broke during or after the construction of the waterway, which was deepened and the trees were removed out of there. I would almost imagine, given the location of the tile, that there were probably quite a few trees in there. Gene's been out there, he knows that. It was quite a mess in there, it was broken concrete and whatnot. I went out with the tiling contractor because he'd been called, I think, by the owner of the FSA. I'm not sure how he, doesn't matter how he found out about it. So water is running down this newly constructed waterway, messing things up for not only the owner, but the guy downstream. And I don't, I talked to the NRCS rep, there's no way that they would participate in the fixing. There wasn't any participation in the construction of the waterway through this tree area, just because of, I'm not really sure what the rules, but it didn't allow it to do it. Talked to the contractor, I haven't talked to the landowner. It's kind of a, you know, who should fix this, what's the cause of it, you know? Would it have been tree root roots and problems anyway? Wouldn't know what that was if he had not given us those points. I've got those in my system probably. In doing it. I'm not too far along on this, I just found out about this last week, but I think the landlord is going to become impatient to plant. And with that water running down, I'm not sure that it can be a simple fix, say to replace a tile. It's a twelve inch tile and it's really dashing a lot of water. I'm not sure if there could be a simple fix. We've really got a lot of problems ourselves to fix yet too, that are kind of ahead of the game and some of them are, you know. Pretty likely.
So where's the repair gonna have to be made at?
Probably right where that circle is Dean.
Oh, I see, right there.
It may be, maybe two, three hundred feet, just guessing. I think probably the tile's gonna have to be relocated up into the side of the waterway or put, if it's put in the bottom of the waterway, probably some strong tile would have to be put in there.
So you think that's now the bottom of the waterway that the rest circles at?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I think so. And the tile is apparently there, you know, after connecting to the dots from the GPS location, it is apparently in that area and that's where the waterway is. I did, I did see the evidence of the broken tile.
So these round dots is where you probed or something and located tile and then you connected the straight lines?
Just connected the straight lines, you know, and that's, that's an assumption, the alignment of it between the dots.
You're supposed to go straight between there.
This is where the contractor had dug up, found the tile, so he could do his tile. I just went along with my little handheld GPS and located each one of those holes, so it's roughly probably around twenty, thirty feet, but it's, it's a better alignment than the red alignment, which is, which is not good, so.
So I'm assuming that it's wet from the, to the left of where that broken tile is in?
It's, it's actually, it's blowing up, so it's, it's, it's to the right.
To the right?
To the right, yeah.
So Dave, are there still trees there? Have they been grubbed out?
They've all been grubbed out, it's cleaned up. Yeah, there was actually a bulkhead in there that they, that they think that my, that tile might have been hooked to and that might be why it's so shallow and I think that bulkhead might have been trying to hold back a bigger ditch. And I, I think we were in there, we're two times, weren't we, last year?
Yeah, we were back in that acreage, yeah.
Probably, probably where that dot is there along that bin line, that's, we were probably in that area.
Yeah, that's where we looked at that last time.
It's, yeah, it's.
Well, it's gonna have to be fixed.
Something, something needs to be done, yeah.
How big a drain is it?
Twelve inches.
Twelve inch?
Twelve inch, yeah.
So you think you gotta relocate somewhere?
I think we may have to, yeah. Either that or, you know, put some metal pipe in or some strong pipe in, so if they run over it with a newer wagon or deep till equipment, whatever.
Do you think they may have broke that when they pulled up trees?
Could have been, yeah.
I'd see how deep it is before I start relocating them all.
The way those tree roots latch into tile, just pulling a tree out could pull a tile.
Yeah, oh definitely, yeah. Where the tree root could still be there and just forcing it out, plugging it. You don't know if that's the case Dean?
No, I don't know that's the case. I don't, I don't know if we would have the chance to fix it promptly. I, it's the payment end of it that I'm wondering about, whether the, whether the property owner or the contractor or the drain should pay for it or, you know, just, just what comes first, the chicken or the hen. It's kind of like these tree roots on, on that last grain, the grain I showed you last, last week, you know, when we had a, we had a landowner that probably wasn't cognizant of what was going on there and, you know, and that's probably the case a lot of times. We've got a, got a case in Brita right now where we've got tree roots, same, same thing and we always have the drain paid for it, which is, the city's in the drain, but.
Believe in you get a private contractor right now, you're gonna have a heck of a time because they're, they're getting busy.
Yeah. I, I think maybe the guy that did the work would maybe go in and fix it. I, you know, he, he doesn't want to pay for it. First sure, probably the property owner doesn't want to pay for it.
I can guarantee that he won't pay for it.
So that leaves the drain and plans of your lab.
Thing of it is, until you actually go out there with a backhoe and start digging and find out what's there, you don't know what you're gonna get involved in.
Yeah.
I mean, it could be minor, it could be, it could take a day.
I don't know if it could be a temporary fix made to where they get the water out of there and then come in in the fall and then repair it properly. But we're kind of behind just because we've had these big, big jobs to do with these tree roots and we've got more on the docket to do. And I would imagine we could get to it, but it might be later than what, you know, maybe the contractor could get to it.
Yeah, being, that contractor worked on it, maybe ought to have him later work on it, locate it and see if it could be a temporary fix or whatever. I, if it's gotta be moved, it's gotta be moved. I don't know what else you can do.
Yeah, yeah, that's so often the case, you know, when this happens.
I mean, in the payoffs, we, we haven't made any account, any property owner pay for it. I mean, you're, you're saying that the tree roots or this broken tile is caused by pulling the tree out?
That, I think that could be. I, I, that's, that's an assumption that I made because there, I know there were trees there and I have seen where trees are, what happens. And I think we've all seen it.
Yeah.
And you've had firsthand knowledge of it, you know, and every one of us have seen what happens where, where trees are.
Yeah, I got a picture right here.
It's, it's not good, so that's an assumption that I'm making, but I guess it would be an assumption to make it a valid thing to do, to have the drain pay for it.
Yeah, and I would, I mean, the drain's gonna have to be fixed and I guess if that's, it has to be paid for, so if that's the way it has to be paid. If we have another option.
I would think the operator, the landowner would, would have fixed as bad as anybody. And obviously if the drainage district bears the burden, he's gonna pay for part of it anyhow.
Yeah.
Not sure what percent. The thing, the reason I think we should go ahead and have contractor, probably contractor fix it, but the drainage district probably cooperate. Because it's affecting a lot of people in the drain. That's my thoughts.
I agree with that, I think, yeah. In the past, we haven't selected out, made anybody pay for it, so.
No, we haven't.
The last dot is just the last place you found the tile, it's not the end of the tile by any means.
Within that, yeah. It'd be real interesting to see where the tile goes, you know, how, how it does get back on the, that planned alignment. I was really kind of disappointed in the alignment of the tile because I always figured that, well, they were better than that. But the cases are not we're finding.
Well, I think we should go ahead and have contractor, probably contractor fix it, but the drainage district probably cooperate. Because it's affecting a lot of people in the drain. That's my thoughts.
I agree with that, I think, yeah. In the past, we haven't selected out, made anybody pay for it, so.
No, we haven't.
And you got any other drains or?
I do.
You got a whole.
You want a separate motion on this one?
Uh, you know, we've got that one up in Brita.
That one's a little bit different.
That's a little bit different, but maybe ought to talk about that before you make a motion on this because it's, it's kind of the same thing, only different.
Okay. Is this something that work at you Brita?
No, it's right along the Soft Rail Trail.
It's right along the Soft Rail Trail. We, intakes are full. Where, where was your complaint from? Was it there by those bins or? Was it up, up the plug?
No, I, I think it was up here.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, it's, the plug, the plug's up here.
Yeah, I think so too. We've got trees along there and, uh, tree roots.
What drain is this?
Seventy.
Seventy.
And the last time we dug up and fixed the tree roots, the golf course said that they would pay for any other tree root damage rather than taking the trees out.
Do you have documentation of that?
I wrote it on a notepad, you know, whether that's good or not, I kept it.
I think there's, there's water, there's water back up in here. And, and down in here, and this is where the drain is.
I think we not only have problems.
These trees flows this way, yeah.
With the golf course, we have problems in City Park too.
Well, and we fixed that last year.
We fixed by one tree last year.
Yeah, and they didn't remove it, they didn't remove the tree.
They didn't remove the tree?
We removed one tree out of there, didn't we?
I don't think so. I never saw it stop.
No.
Gone down through the drain. That wouldn't happen.
I bet a nickel that we got trouble in there. Pretty bold bet in that nickel. We're gonna go up there and run a locator up through the line if we can get in there and whatnot, find out where the line is, GPS it, get it on the map, look at the trees adjacent to it, make all assumptions that we can. So that one's kind of like this one, a little different.
Those tile, should remove them always after they planted, don't they?
They sure do.
I suppose that's the same situation as cemetery.
Well, it could be.
I, I do have a couple more drains, but those, those are the ones that are.
Let's do them all at one time then.
Well, with the one, with the one on Brita, you're not gonna make a decision on that though until you actually check it out.
We gotta find out where, where to go, if it's maybe a simple repair.
Yeah.
But I think we need more knowledge as far as its location and if there's problems up the line. Appears to me if there's trees, there's tree roots, there's gonna be problems.
But the thing is, it's gonna have to be repaired, so what, basically you, you're probably gonna not know what does the extent of those repairs are, but we can authorize the repair of it.
You can authorize a repair?
Yeah, you know, you know.
I mean, we don't know what extent it's gonna be until you explore it.
How it's gonna be paid for is another thing.
Well, it's drain.
The drain's paid for, yeah. Unless, unless we get the golf course to pay for the trees by then.
Well, yeah, I mean, let's say.
That's what I mean.
If they had said that, then approach them and see what happens. And if they buck, you know what you're gonna do? Charge the drain.
At, at any rate, you, you guys are charged with the fixing of the drains, it's the trustees is.
See, that way if you charge a drain, I know he, he gets part of the bill.
Yeah.
He's a lot of effort on that.
I'm gonna keep planting trees, dude. You believe in sharing? I'm not in one. I used to be.
Here's another one, an issue with Drain sixty-six, our favorite drain that goes through gravel pit that actually outlets into one of the abandoned pits and takes, takes the outtake of it.
Apparently sixty-six.
The outlet's plugged, uh, it's shown on the map there and.
Don't even wanna look at it, Neil?
I've seen it there.
You know the whole story.
Yeah, I do.
And it's flooding the pit and flooding the surrounding land.
That was the messenger.
And where is this at located?
Richland pit.
Twenty-three Richland, isn't it?
Section twenty-three. Operator of the said real estate and the adjacent real estate, I'm out there with him.
We're on Rain sixty-six, that's, it's always good for a couple a year, maybe three.
That, where Dave's got it circled there, what the drain, I think it's fifteen inch tile, drains into that pit and then it also exits that pit approximately where Dave's got that, um, yellow square. And I believe that's where the obstruction is because everything else is. Saturation flooding the field. Another, another one where it has to be fixed before you can plant corn.
So it's, it's plugged right after it leaves the pit, you think, the water?
I think it's plugged right, yeah, at or after it leaves the pit, right in there. Could be a rodent issue.
That might be a case to where we can dig the tile up, maybe put an intake in and then dig a trench over to it and get the drain caper really.
That'd be great. The good thing is where you're working, not cropland, CRP, but it's, is flooding cropland on the other side of that pit.
Then there's the last one. This is Drain twenty-five in section eighteen of Sheridan, Reskenobi. He thinks he's got a problem with tile in there because he's getting some ponding. We're on Sher, there's no holes other than it's pushing the water out the intakes, uh, which you see quite a bit of nowadays and there's been some pattern tiling done upstream of those intakes that are all outletting into that particular tile. This one is maybe gonna take some investigation. It may be too late to, to do anything. He's got the surrounding ground planted and, yeah, I think he's already been washed out. It's gonna be planted, I suspect he probably will. But it's not on the list anyways and.
Problem is, he doesn't know where the problem is.
He doesn't know where the problem is, we don't either.
Yeah, if you don't know the problems, I do.
Yeah. I'm not sure, in, in the past, we've kind of asked the landowners, you know, to show us where the problem is and sometimes it's not very obvious. There's, there's no blowout or anything, it's just working slow. No trees, nothing we've got to put a finger at, point a finger at.
Thing of it is, everything's so saturated and all the tiles are so full. I mean, that might be one of those deals where in time, if it dries out a little bit, it'll go away, but.
Yeah. If the intakes are an indicator of setting over the tile, there doesn't appear to be much flow coming down. There doesn't appear to be proportionate flow. He was gonna go out in the field and check an intake in a field that was on the line and see how it was behaving. Then I heard that, yeah.
Good information as well.
So we're still investigating that one?
Still investigating, yeah. Good to see a lot of wildlife, a lot of ducks and frogs and.
In July, he won't be around.
That's it for drains then?
That's it.
I got one for you.
Oh.
Oh.
We're not done yet.
Not done yet. I believe, Marty and I decided it was Drain eighteen.
Yeah.
Schultz's. Schultz.
Down like.
Down. It's blown out of the ground again down there by those cribs.
Yeah.
It's a blowout going out down there. He got ahold of me this weekend. I told him that I would come down and look at it, but I wanted to visit with Marty and yourself. So let's all go down together and take a peek at it. Marty was talking, this is, and I think he's, his biggest concern is this is the third time in five years. And it sits real shallow and he thinks there's just so much upper pressure on it because of all the tiles that's been added.
That was the one that had the tree roots in, I think, wasn't it?
Is that?
I don't know.
That might have been two years ago we were down there because I think Donnie Tool is still working for us and.
Yeah, maybe longer than that, Don was working for us, huh?
I don't know all the specifics to it, so I thought I'd go down with you and we'd take a look at it. Now Marty thought maybe there was a chance, maybe there's, could be a relief.
Section three.
Place in someplace else in a ditch.
Yeah.
Maybe we can come up with an idea. So you think about that a little bit. Give me a day and a time and we'll all three hook up and we'll just ride down in quick and take a look at that.
Sounds like a lot of fun.
Yeah. Just a hoot.
Yeah.
I can check out the frogs with you.
So there's not a real known problem, yeah?
Well, you know, it's blown out of the ground.
But you don't know where the location or problem is.
It's by those wire cribs. I did not go down and look at it. I, I got ahold, I talked to him yesterday and I wasn't gonna go down.
Who was it? Schultz?
Yeah, Larry.
Larry Schultz.
I believe it's like a half mile south of the four corner stop there and then off to the east. There's those two wired cribs that are off back in that, tucked back in that field's down in there. It's got lower eighty.
Section three, Union Town.
Yeah.
Oh, Union.
Can't reach it back the ground across the road there. Yeah, I think that's all shell.
Yeah, like I said, we've been there before.
Yeah, that's not a little problem.
Yeah, that's kind of the gist I got out of, from Larry, that it's, could be a lot bigger.
Yeah.
Problem.
Reggie Rorbeck was in, I think, maybe the third or the fourth time, tells about Drain thirty-one, another blowout.
So from the east to Glidden?
Huh?
Over east to Glidden?
Yeah. And, uh, and also talking about Drain one oh three, which has been thrown over by Shones. I don't know where that is, where we dipped out by the end of those tiles, I think there's something wrong with that too.
So kind of come up with a time and look at your schedule with you when you get back and let Marty and I know and see if we can make something work and we'll all go down and take a peek at that.
Okay, sounds good.
So you want this and add to repairs?
I don't think there's anything we can do with it because I don't think we know the extent of the problem.
I don't think, I don't think.
So just reporting it?
Just reporting it, yeah, but it, there could be some work there, but.
Might have to start considering, you know, doing a letting on some of these, hiring an engineer to, to decide what to do and having a letting, let contractors do it.
Well, yeah, I, a little more of a, a long-term answers on some of these than they can. And then he brought up a very good point. The more, the more tiling we do, the more pressure we put on these tiles that are old.
Yeah.
They're asking them to do way more than they were ever designed to do. But we're talking about hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to increase those sizes or come up with.
Yeah.
We're talking about money that's a lot of it, a lot of it.
Thing I'm, I'm concerned of is we're spending a lot of, like, you know, we had seven guys down on that, on one project for a couple of days and this is prime time for us to do our work too.
Yeah.
And, uh, we're gonna have to kind of get cut loose to, to do that. It's kind of a dilemma.
Yeah.
Not that we don't enjoy doing the work and whatnot because it is.
Yeah.
It is kind of enjoyable.
But at the same time, there's some of these drains, we're starting to pump money and pump money and pump money, so there's a point where we're gonna have to say, enough's enough, we gotta do some other major corrective issues here because you can't keep, you know.
Yeah, we're just.
Can't keep repairing them.
Money after bad, yeah.
No, I mean, it's like you got a goddamn wagon, the wheels keep falling off and you keep fixing it, it's only worth fifty bucks, well you.
You were here for when we did one oh two and we did the cleanup for one oh two. You were, were Eugene here when, when we did the cleanup for one oh two and hired MHF at that time to do that, you know? That was, that was a process, you know, when they reclassified it and whatnot.
Yeah, that was your.
It's, it's not a, it's not an easy road to take. But it's, we're gonna probably have to start taking it on a select few that are really, really overloaded.
Yeah, it's gonna have to be done on an individual basis, that's for sure. Just like each one of these is different, each drainage district.
Yeah, absolutely.
Whole is unique.
But, you know, like I said, if we can start looking at longer term solutions, it's gonna, and not try to do them all at once where we can do it just a here and there and eventually make a, a better system out of it.
Yeah, this is, you know, and it should, the system should be pretty well studied, you know, for the volume coming down on them and, you know, there should be some thought put into it. I, I read a report that MHF is now Bolton and Mink and, uh, but they're, they're concentrating on that and they do a lot of, a lot of work up north. They probably do. You've got some drainage district stuff up north, don't you?
Yeah.
Talking about this huge projects.
Yeah, forty inch tiles.
Yeah.
To remind you, I mean, what do you, what do you go to?
Forty inch tiles.
Go to fifty fours next and then where do you go after that?
I don't know.
I mean, you know, and then, and we just talked about this morning, you know, as the value of this farmland goes up, that, that's gonna be more pressure being put on, um, that land producing to help pay for it. Well, if we start looking at ditchways and then things like that, then we're taking land out of production, which puts more pressure out there for the farmer. So, so there's a lot of things to talk about here. It's not just a simple solution. It looks good on paper, but. It looks good on paper, but when it comes to their finances, it makes a big deal.
No.
It's a big deal.
And it's gonna cost them, you know.
Exactly.
Right.
It's costing them one way or another, and then it may double cost them, and that's what you don't wanna do.
There's no county money in county drains.
Yeah. That's exactly right.
Something you don't know.
Yeah. We try to be good stewards of their money.
Yeah.
And that's what it's come down to, how long do we wanna keep doing it in places? That we can fix better, for a longer period of time.
Okay, my understanding, we have four drains, drain fifty-four, seventy-six, six, and twenty-five. Dave needs authorization to do some sort of repair if it's necessary. And somebody made contract with the contractor to do it, which is drain fifty-four.
I make a motion and effective, go ahead, move forward with those and do the investigation and do the repairs if needed.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Then move and second to authorize the repairs on those four drains. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
I think I'll stay on pretty tight on that one drain.
Okay, one up station. Okay, utility permits.
First one I have is from Windstream. This is where they're relocating a fiber next to our box culvert, south of Glidden there. We're working out that one by Ralph Box Residence. They're, they were nice enough to go head to head rather than digging adjacent to our road. Put the optic fiber just about that far off the edge of the road. Wouldn't have been a good deal if they'd have done that, but they were real good about it. There's only one copy of it.
And that's in where?
I don't know, that's a good question. Richland Township, two forty-four, and forty-four on two hundred and fifty-fifth street. That's in section twenty-nine and, see if I can find the other one.
Timber Avenue sixteen.
Anyway, twenty-nine of Richland.
You got someone we have?
No, I've got a second one here. From Mid-American Energy. And they wanna install two poles on the north side of three hundredth street. East of Ivy Avenue and then extend High Golding's distribution line under three hundredth street. Crossing the south line, continuing south to provide service to Templeton Rye, two nineteen East Third Street, Templeton. Got a pretty nice drawing here on showing where they're gonna be on three hundredth street.
That's Eden Township. What section?
Is that eighteen, seventeen?
Section nine.
Ten?
Sixteen.
Nine and sixteen?
What'd you say with nine and sixteen? Did Reddick then, Dave?
That's it for the utility permits, yeah.
Okay. You've heard the request for the utility permits.
I'll move to approve the utility permits.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Approve the utility permits. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. And you say there's only one of the one?
Only one of the one, yeah. Two of the Templeton Rye, one of them.
Yeah, the other day, Dave and I met south of Templeton, just out of Sherwood accident, we pulled over and walked across. I walked cross over to his pickup, and he about, about got ran over. I told him, you gotta stand off this road, there might be, there's a lot of traffic on it right now. And it was.
We were talking about the speed limit down there, I couldn't find a good excuse to get down there, or take much.
That is a question, okay, that was brought up to me, is that the city's responsibility?
It's our responsibility, but we're supposed to consult with the city.
Because I was brought up, they said that that speed limit sign got removed when something got done up there, when you.
Probably that forty, I would imagine, maybe, where the northbound traffic got removed. I talked to Dale Prebeck, and he thought if we'd move that back to where the speed zone ahead sign is, probably five hundred feet back there, get it to the south side of Los Spies. Put a forty mile an hour there.
We have ordinance for that?
No, we do a red lip resolution when we do it. And I'm not really sure, since we've done the jurisdictional transfer, you know, we've got this by agreement. It says that we're supposed to do it in consultation with the city, and it was, it was the city's idea that we have to keep the city clued in. Though I don't know that they need to do a resolution on it, since it's our jurisdiction.
So it does wind up being our jurisdiction on traffic. I didn't know about the speed limit signs, that was ours or not.
Our box culvert contractor is Richards, is going to start, he was gonna meet the guys up there this morning. The culvert up by Berita, it's an eighteen-foot wide by eleven-foot tall culvert. It's up by Fred Adams, that neck of the woods there. And so, he should get one on that, I think he's gonna work on a couple of them at a time. But it should be, should be happening pretty soon here, it's kinda all coming together the way it looks. Haven't talked to the asphalt contractor since the pre-construction conference, but looked at the haul roads. And there's a number of dust control spots that they're gonna come out and do, I'm not sure, maybe, I gotta look at the calendar here. Maybe the second to last week in May, or maybe the last, last week, full week of day.
Stream.
Before they go, oh, thank you. Yeah. Probably not the week of the fifteenth here, but more than likely the week of the twenty-second of May that they would come out and do that. There's, there's twenty-two spots. Probably what we're gonna do in front of each residence, and even a hog confinement, didn't do the intersections, just because we've got so many spots. Probably do a four-hundred-foot spot in front of each one of the residents. The ones that have gotten, get more traffic on it, which would be this three miles here, and this three miles. They're gonna come out of the Shoemaker's pit, go south down the Willie Road, come across the green line here up to seventy-one, and then come over and do this stretch here. For the Mahogany, straight south to the Swan Lake corner, they're gonna come up the pavement, up to Slaughterhouse Road, down there, down Mahogany, and then back out. Back out on this two-hundred-and-thirtieth street. So two-thirty will be the return route for Mahogany and for the Albert Rozell Road, hauling back to the plant. They're gonna use the pavement to go down to Templeton, go through Dedham, and then over down through Templeton, but they'll be using these side roads to cut down through there. So there won't be a big amount of traffic on any one of these, but there still will be traffic. So, I don't know, twenty-two of those, you buy for two-hundred a spot. Forty-four, forty-five hundred dollars, I suppose, something like that. We've, we've got some issues with some gravel hauling, too, that where we're gonna do three, three spots where we've got people basically living right on top of the pits. And it's something we don't have to do, but talked about it a little bit. Thought it would probably be the best thing to do from a neighbor standpoint.
So you said there's twenty-three on that asphalt?
There's twenty-two on the asphalt, the way I come right, Gene.
Okay, that's fine.
And.
Do you always do that, Dave?
What?
The haul routes?
Yeah. Yeah, but it's, it's interesting with a lot of these pits that contractors set up in, are padded up in sticks. And they gotta bring material in, they usually have to bring sixty, seventy percent of the material in, they'll set up in a gravel pit, but it's usually on a gravel road. And so they feed down that. I think we're still required by law to do that. With our local gravel hauling, we're exempt from that. I've had the DNR call me on that, too, and then read their instructions and if it's, that makes for a lot of conflict, too. You have a lot of heavy gravel hauling going in and out of the pits, they'll exempt from doing it. We used to have to do it, we used to have to do it in any case. It's probably best if we do it just to keep peace.
Well, I just didn't know if we did it when we're hauling out of Tefen Teller's pit that time, doing the.
Asphalt?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
You did?
Yeah. Across the hundred and tenth, yeah, we did every one of the intersections and every, every place and every hog confinement. Yeah, sure did. Trying, trying to keep it going around in circles so they're not meeting one another, because it's a not a good thing.
True.
We did the same thing with the Willie, Willie Rozell, we did all the, all the detours there and whatnot. It's getting to be a more common thing. But we're stopped paying for it. I suspect we can make the contract to pay for it, but it just costs us more.
They'll bill you, you're paying for it.
Right back, yeah. And we do that, don't we, with our trucks, or do we have somebody else do that?
We have Jericho doing it. The representative, Jericho, he was out last week. I think it's a really pretty good deal. It's expensive, but there's not a lot of market that, not enough to warrant us getting that.
But for, you know, for two hundred bucks, that's not that bad of a deal.
Yeah, yeah. The gallon price.
Once you do it, that's pretty well, it's good for the season.
Yeah, they do usually two applications. I think, I think they're running about three-tenths of a gallon per square yard or for every nine square feet. They run about three-tenths of a gallon of calcium chloride. They do a spring application, then a fall application, or a late summer application. Hopefully, we can just get by with one application here. We're gonna try and put it on heavier, where we're gonna haul a lot. We could haul twenty-seven thousand tons over to two-hundred-and-fiftieth street, so. It'd be pretty interesting till it's all over.
Okay, anything else, Dave?
I can't think of anything unless you guys got something.
You know, I called you the other day when you were doing that gravel, this morning I got on a different road, you said, getting big rocks now, come out and pick them up. That's what you just wanted, a rock in your gravel.
I had a call from a guy, a guy the other day, alerting me. I think there was a few, few of those rocks in the salvage there, we're gonna pick up the bigger ones. A few of those, too, yeah. Tim, Tim bladed them to the side, and I was gonna pick them up this morning.
That's a good problem, Gene, I had someone, a farmer, tell me that we were putting too much gravel on his road, and I says, should I report that to engineer? And he goes, nope.
We can stop it anytime.
Too much gravel.
We can stop it anytime.
It's a lot of fun, you know.
Well, this one I got the other day, you started complaining before we even finished it, you waited to finish it, then it looked all right.
Yeah.
So, anyway.
Anyway, thank you.
I'll give you a call, Dave, on Maple River situation, too.
Okay, yeah, Maple River situation, so.
They're.
It's not a kind of drainage deal, is it?
Yeah, you've got my number, I know you got Marty's.
I do, yeah, I got my card already.
Just get old Marty, call Marty, he'll find me, just give us a day and the time, and we'll see if we can make it work.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, next we have is approval of plot for Albert Lawson. And that is a.
Acreage.
Acreage.
Yeah, familiar with that. Acreage. It's just pretty cut and dry. I'll move to approve the Z plot.
Second.
Okay, then move and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Okay, next we have is a resolution for inter-fund transfers. This is tax increment funds back into the local option of fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents.
I have a question on that, I meant to ask you this morning, but on our claims, there's an eleven thousand dollar interest. Is that included in this? So this is the principal amount. So in addition to that, there was eleven thousand dollars of interest paid.
Yeah, total payment.
But that should also go into the local option.
And it does, it gets, we have to write a check for the interest part of it.
Separately.
Yeah, and that gets deposited into there with a total payment of sixty-eight thousand, nine twenty, sixty-seven.
Okay, but that isn't in on this transfer, because it goes directly from, it doesn't go through the TIF fund then, or what?
Well, it is in the TIF fund, the check is getting written out of there. It's just, we were told by the state auditors that to pay back the loan, we transfer the principal payment, and we write a check for the interest payment.
Interest doesn't need to be transferred.
And then we, it all, it all gets moved back.
No way they can track it?
So the interest is by check, and this is by transfer paperwork?
Correct.
Okay, that explains it.
Yeah, after this payment, I show a balance owed of five eighty-nine, three sixty-five. So about five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars.
And this is TIF fund?
ICP.
For our corn process.
ICP.
ICP.
So they pay their tax payment, and it goes into our TIF fund. And then we go ahead and do this to move into the local option, to pay back the loan and take money from the interest.
That's your local option.
Good. Isn't I have?
Very good, I understand.
Is that right?
Just one.
There's one now? That's all we have? We didn't have one on the.
We used to have one down in town.
Fertilizer.
But that's, that's.
Gone, that's taken care of, okay.
So that one was handled different. That was more of a tax credit, but anyway.
Okay. So it was actually sixty-eight, almost sixty-nine thousand, it's going into that account then, okay. Very good.
If there's no other questions, I'd make a motion to approve the resolution for inter-fund transfer.
I'll second that motion.
It's been motion made and seconded to approve the resolution for the inter-fund transfer of fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. Roll call?
Minors?
Yes.
Suggles?
Yes.
Chell?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Motion carries, I have just received.
I'll take it up to a church, please.
Nope.
Why would you vote against income?
Huh?
Why would anybody vote against income?
I'm surprised.
The extra ad should maybe not say that.
Okay, next we have a set of public hearing for AE Fork LL seat construction permit, section thirty-two of Maple River Township.
And that is there in that blue book underneath the minority management?
So this is one that we have to draw on to the site inspection, right?
That's my understanding.
There's a good color map in there, it shows, right there, Gene, it shows where it is. It's building it right next to his residence, but he meets all the distance regulations from the other residents and waterways near the local.
I'll pass this around, you can take a look at it then.
That'd be, um. Robert Rozell, I think that's fairly close there.
So what is the distance? Minimum distance?
Well, I can't tell you exactly what they are, but they're in the, uh, minor management, uh, thing. Does it say the minimum? It says what the actual distance is.
Distance is, you know, I just wonder, I'm just curious as to what it is.
Yeah, I couldn't tell you offhand, but...
Was twelve-hundred and fifty feet?
How many?
Twelve-fifty or something like that? Depends on what size of suit it was.
Yeah. So there's a big distance between residential, waterways, county tile also included there?
We had that, do you want those master matrix checkpoint things that would explain it?
I bet it's in the back of that. Didn't look, but it's right in there. Looking at orange folder, but that's master matrix, isn't it? Or isn't it?
Construction design statement?
Yeah, there's a master matrix.
Courtney, was there a specific time or that DNR was gonna be out there that...
I haven't, um, somebody left a contact.
Okay.
The DNR and find out.
We did a map from Carl Wilburn, so it shows early in the Wells, right, with the Wells format?
I have, uh...
Yeah, that was my next question.
Contact information here.
County tile and all that stuff. They're all counted into this.
Public entities, public parks, cemeteries.
So you can't just kinda willy-nilly these yet or really be kinda...
This is the one time that we have a say with that resolution.
And see if she can hear me.
Now, we need to go do a physical...
Site review, yeah.
All of us need to go and say...
Yeah, I think I was only... We usually out there one time.
Okay, anybody who can be available to go.
We meet with DNR at the site and then kind of go over things.
Very good.
I will email the DNR and find out when they're gonna be there.
Did you see this, Gene?
Yeah, I did.
I will email the DNR and find out when they'll be there and then I'll let you guys know and then whoever can be there can be there.
So what time do you prefer to set this up?
Um, I'm just going with like the final date because they have dates for deadlines, May thirtieth at nine-thirty. That should give, because we have to have it back to them later than the fifth of June, so...
Yeah, that'd be the day after Memorial Day, huh?
Yeah, Tuesday.
I would make a motion to that effect, to set the public hearing for May thirtieth at nine-thirty for AE Pork LLC Construction Permit.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the public hearing for May thirtieth at nine-thirty. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify the same aye.
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 Contrary, motion carried, okay? Uh, next is Wellmark.
Do you want me to explain what I did here and...
Yeah, why don't you?
So I have two, I think I gave you guys two Excel spreadsheets. One said fiscal eighteen, Wellmark suggested rates. And the other one said fiscal eighteen, it would be for HM suggested rates. And that is the monthly cost. So what I did is I just punched in their suggested rates in our spreadsheet we use every month for payroll. Um, it has everybody that's on our plan, total members, so it's pretty accurate. Unless somebody leaves or we hire new people, but in May, this is what it would be. So you can see that monthly cost, Wellmark suggested rates is a hundred-and-forty thousand, eight-seventy-nine ninety-seven. And HM's monthly cost would be a hundred-and-forty thousand, six-thirty-five eighty-five. So you can see that HM is a little less, um, monthly. Now, if you remember last year, the Wellmark came back with suggested rates of about ten percent higher and we had budgeted about six percent, so the board had decided to go with six percent and see where our, where our fund balance in the, the health insurance stayed. And it's been over a million dollars since we've done that, so it, it, that looks good. But our suggested, what we're charging for our rates on our county plan is not the suggested rates because we didn't go to the ten percent, we're at the six percent. So what I did is then I looked to see where we were at and I did the one percent because that's what we budgeted and it's a hundred-and-thirteen thousand, eight-fifty-six sixteen, monthly cost. So we're about thirty-some thousand dollars less every month than what their suggested rates are. But, you know, we can still keep an eye on that fund balance and if it starts looking like something needs to be done, then you guys would need to probably increase the, the rates. So, um, that was one thing that made it a little confusing because our, we're not actually gonna be charging the suggested rates, but I wanted you to know, because they're gonna charge us their administrative fees, so we need to just probably go with the one that's less, I would recommend, even though it's just a small amount. It's enough that it...
But would, uh, what does that do for accounting though, for having two different, working with two organizations?
It's not a big deal. It really isn't. Um, every month, we have to mail them a check. Sometimes we get lucky and it happens, we do it on a bill day, so it's not any extra work there. I send them an email once a month with, um, reports that they request. They're reports that Wellmark gives me every month, so all I have to do is basically copy and paste them and send them to them. It's not... And I have not heard from any employee that anybody's had any issues with their, get, people getting paid or anything like that. Most people don't even know. You know, because you get your EOB and it doesn't say anything on there about who's paying it. It just says what you owe.
Right.
So I haven't had any complaints. So I guess I'd recommend going with them. I mean, we've been using HM and it's...
For the stop loss.
I, I agree with Gene. I asked Courtney that same question. I says, the difference isn't very much. How much extra work is there to be working with two counties?
Labor costs may overs...
And, and, you know, it's insignificant, so...
I asked her that, I think there's anything else, so...
It's not the factor that I, I thought it may be, so... Um, I wanna thank Courtney for rerunning these numbers. She had some more, a few changes and some more accurate figures than what I did and it came down to be a lot closer than the rough figures I had given at our last meeting. I think I had thirteen-hundred dollars difference and here it's just a couple of hundred. So it's really gotten closer with these more accurate figures. Um, and that's ones we want to use, but, um, yeah, I, I, I'm with Courtney. Let's go with the low bid and then we're cut and dry, the little bidders winners and so we'll...
Deal with it that way.
And like Gene says, if there'd been a huge overhead cost involved in doing that, I'd thought differently.
Yeah, that's, that was my concern too.
I asked that same question, Gene, yeah.
Well, and the other thing too...
So we're on the same page then?
Yeah, I, I would say that was a good question.
The other thing too is I think if, if HM, you know, I mean, we, we still want their bid every year, you know? And if we don't take it this year, you know, they might...
That's right.
Not be as willing to give us a good bid next year, so...
Absolutely.
Okay, so you need a motion on that one or...
Um, yeah, I'd be okay with that way, um, because the forms are things that I have to sign, so if you give me guidance as to which way you guys wanna go, we can go that way.
Okay.
I would move that we renew with HM Life and refer to that as our stop-loss insurance. Our stop-loss insurance, is that the correct term? I call it reinsurance, okay?
I'll second that motion.
HM Life? For that, for stop-loss? Uh, okay, we have a... Motion second to that effect. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Okay, what, what else do we need to do on this?
Um, we need to talk about the, um, we have several people that are on our insurance that are retirees, so they pay a hundred-and-two percent of the premium. And I didn't know, do you wanna go ahead and just increase theirs one percent as well? Or do you wanna increase that a little more? Tech, in the past, we've always just kinda went with whatever employees went up, that's what theirs went up.
So our employees is just gonna go up about, about one percent?
One percent.
I would say make it the same.
I would too.
Just keep it simple.
Yep.
It's been established.
It's not that big of an increase.
No.
So...
Anything else that we need to do on that insurance? Do we have some options that we have to pick out?
Well, the, yeah, but the options that we have left are ones that don't have to be done till renewal because the ones that were, we made decisions at last meeting on, like the distinction and all the other ones for...
What, I mean, that doctors on demand and stuff like that?
Yeah, we, we went ahead and did that because there was no cost.
The reinsurance, naturally, and the health savings account are what we have not decided on.
Right.
Right.
We just decided on the reinsurance. So what's left is, do we wanna go with naturally slim and for the healthy savings account option? We've not decided those two. There was a few others we, we did decide last week in the early minutes that, uh...
Yeah. The doctors on demand, the distinction.
Yeah, I think those are it.
Yeah.
Okay. So I, it's up to the board, I guess, but at some point, we need to decide on the naturally slim and the health savings account option.
Yeah, the health savings, you would need to decide on that one before renewal because that's another plan option.
And there's no extra cost on that? It's just an option that the individuals can choose, um, to participate in? And then if there's nobody doing it, then I think they said they would drop it or if there's a...
Right.
There was only a few?
My concern was, you know, we have a flex account, you know, and we have to pay a monthly fee per employee that's on it, which is fine. We're gonna have to set up an account for the HSA. Is there gonna be a monthly fee associated with that as well?
The one, the one that was associated with before was, it was done through a banking institution.
Okay.
And the money was deposited by electronic transfer into that institution. That institution charged, I believe, a dollar a month to manage it.
To who? The county or the employee?
To the employee. So the cost was passed directly.
So was there, but there was interest? They, they gained interest on that?
There was interest paid on that account, yes. Uh, sometimes, depending where you start out in life, but the interest may not cover your dollar, but it depends on the amount.
Do you have a comment on that?
Yeah, the HSA that we have is our responsibility, so there was no fee to, to them. They just set it up and transferred it to, we set up the bank account and everything. Okay.
And, and there is a checking, there's a checkbook issued on that, uh, so you can make payments and, or cards, however they choose, your institution decides to do it.
Okay, like a bank account.
So, and that's kinda why the dollar, I think, is there.
Each individual has a territory?
Each individual, they have to be individualized, so if mine has one, I have one, they have to be separate. Because there's a mask on it, you can probably unmute your by state.
Correct.
So Courtney, you know our employees probably better than anybody else because you do the, uh, human resource part of it. Do you think we'd have very many people interested in this?
I don't know that I could answer that.
What, what was the difference from us and the premium? Do you remember? I don't, can't find that sheet.
Does anybody have that sheet? I could grab it.
I do not have that. And I was trying to...
The one that he brought in that had the HSA option?
They should be on the last, you're in the last meeting. How many of these people would care?
I don't think there was that much, if I remember, there wasn't that much of a difference.
This one here, I believe. Yeah, I, I think there was concern that there wasn't a big enough price difference doing this. I, I think the, uh, back to one, the big advantage of this, um, health savings account is that money is always yours.
Exactly.
And it's gotten a little, um, less attractive because with our flex plan, you can carry, I think, five-hundred dollars over each year. So it's, that's no longer a use it or lose it proposition, you can carry, you know, that amount over every year.
But, but there are years that employees are forced into spending.
Yeah, it depends upon how much you set aside. If you set the maximum aside and, you know, you don't have anything, then...
I mean, there, there are some advantages also to the HSA. Because there are, there's tax deductions for the amount you put in, which can change your tax bracket or your amount of income.
The flex plan is pre-tax also.
Mm-hmm.
But, but how much limit does it have? Do you know?
But, and the thing is with the flex, they can use that not only just for health, but for daycare and all.
That's a diff, yeah, they're two different things. Same, same company, but two different things.
That can use that expense there.
But if you put it in daycare, you have to use it for daycare, you cannot use it for medical.
Yeah, daycare's different. You, you don't get paid until you've actually, you actually have to incur the expense, pay for it and then submit.
Submit that.
The, the biggest...
Well, they're both that way, aren't they?
Well, you could, you could submit your EOB and you haven't paid the bill yet and they'll pay off any EOB. It's a little different.
The biggest deterrent to me for the HSAs, you're gonna go from a twenty-dollar copay when you go to the doctor. When you are gonna get billed a hundred-and-twenty dollars to go to that doctor, you're gonna have to owe the hundred-and-twenty dollars on an HSA. But that's money that was pre-put in there. You can also, uh, you can also get an advance on that, um, as long as you have an, an amount, so... It, it's just a money shift. It looks like a big deal, but it's really not that big a deal, um...
I think you could get people interested in it, but we'd have to have somebody come and really explain it because...
The good, the bad, they're gonna really point it out. And they're gonna have to use examples of people's wages.
So we're not gonna have time to do that?
Well, I, I don't know about that. If we could get them here in May...
Clark said he would come out and explain it to interested employees.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not sold on it, but here's my take on it. Um, this is not a decision we need to make on behalf of the employees. If Clark wants to come out here, employees wanna come and hear his, um, sales pitch and if they like it, if it's to their advantage, they wanna do it, it's no cost to us, um, go for it.
Yeah.
If there's no interest or, then we've at least made that opportunity, so...
Well, and the thing is, I think, isn't a lot of these HSAs set up that there's some money put in with, from the company?
A lot of times, that is very true.
But that is not our intention.
That's not the case here.
Well, we either can or cannot, that's...
But I mean, let, let's make that decision, that might make a difference on the employee.
Well, if, if you can make, let's say, let's say we save, if we save a hundred thousand dollars a year and you turn around and you give a thousand dollars a year to the employee, we got about a hundred employees, it's gonna be a mute point. It, it, the sum money is exactly the same, so, so why go through the hoops of the savings for, for nothing, basically? But if we can save money and give the employee, uh, two-fifty or four-hundred dollars for the whole year as an enticement to get into these programs, my problem with it, with what our insurance, the way it's laid out right now, the low insurance and the next insurance and the HSA, there's not enough difference in those policies. So they're forcing everybody going down here to the most expensive policy that we can put out there. That's where we're paying the maximum amount because there's not enough difference. And I'm not trying to beat the employee out of it, what I'm trying to say is, in the real world out there, a private person is paying fifteen, sixteen, seventeen hundred dollars a month. We're not even close to that yet. Uh, so, and, and it's a really good deal. And, and that helps keep them good employees, I understand that. But it comes a time when, when the taxpayer needs to say enough is kind of enough because I'm paying more than that myself.
Yeah, I think, you know, and the, you as the board gets to, Wellmark gives us a raise that they think we should charge based on claims and things like that. But ultimately, it's the board's call as to what the premiums they wanna charge. So if you wanted to look at making it a bigger gap to entice people into a higher deductible plan, you could certainly do that. I don't know if, I mean, now...
I'm kinda getting thinking now that window's not big enough to, maybe we need to visit with Clark about that very same thing too.
Well, and Neil makes a point, if he's, if he's willing to come up, I have no problem if, if, if... If he's, if he's willing to come up, I have no problem if some employees say they wanna do it, they would do it. I'm sure they're gonna want so many before they switch, won't they?
Um, I think they said right away it wouldn't matter.
Yeah, he says if I get two, three, four, but he said I'd like to see it continue to like one or two grow a year, at least keep growing. But we're manning it, manning it, yeah.
And, you know, and as far as those savings, I think, right now, that's too early for us to make that commitment right now.
Like I said, to me, it's a numbers game. It's all based off what you can save. And I, I can't speak for all of you, but that's how I would look at it.
One advantage of it is, that's key, if people wanna participate, is that the first thing they do is go open an account and put a little bit in it. Then if all of a sudden, oh my, I need surgery on my foot, you can put money in that account, take it right back out, and deduct it. But that account had to have been opened.
Correct.
That's the kind of thing that he needs to come and explain to our employees so they understand all of this.
Up front.
Up front. Before they decide we're going to go.
There's some income and tax advantages to some of this that, that can maybe be pointed out also.
The only, the only thing Clark is not gonna do is compare it to our flex plan. He doesn't even talk about that. That's not his game. But there's a lot of things the flex plan does that you already have that option.
It's not much different than...
And that's not his job. He's just gonna tell, you can't talk for that flex.
Yeah, the flex plan is not a lot different, but what I like about it is it's always your money. And you don't have to spend it if you don't want to, and you can take it for, for every, wherever you go.
I'd say that's probably a huge benefit. Because we'll run into people that are coming in here going, oh, I need to, you know, and...
I guess I need a couple pair of glasses this year that I really didn't plan on.
And it does help.
Even if you're carrying over five hundred, you know, you're forced to do it.
And there's nothing wrong with improving your health, but...
Yeah.
But just to do it, to be doing it, sometimes it's kinda...
But it does help now that you can carry some over.
Yeah.
It does help.
You know, I, you know, I mean, we flex the maximum every year, simply because of the tax benefit. But to spend it is sometimes can be challenging if you...
Do you know what that max was?
Twenty-five hundred.
Yes, I think it's...
I think HSA's is in the fifty, seven hundred range, is that right?
I think they were gonna increase it with that.
Well, I think the new, the new plan's gonna go to eight thousand, I heard, but...
My only concern with our flex plan, and we've only ran into this a couple times, if you have an employee that flexes the max, they could go in January and submit a claim that, let's say they had major dental work done for the whole amount. They haven't paid in, maybe twenty dollars of it, but they can, and they quit in February.
Yeah.
You don't get that money back. The county's out. So that concerns me.
Oh, really? Yeah, you can spend before you have contributed.
And most...
Well, I understand, but I always thought you were liable for it though.
They cannot.
Ooh.
They cannot. It's happened twice that I know of. Most, I will say, most people, they would never think to do that. Most people wouldn't. I mean, that's just not how people are wired there. But it can happen.
Well, I've always got my spend up before I ever all put in with my medication.
Right.
See, and then the county does have a little fund, so to speak, just to account for people that spend faster than they put it in. And then, that probably happens because we just submit it as we get it, and all of a sudden, you're out of money and it's middle of the year, and well, you catch up later.
In February, end of February, first part of March, it gets down there to hardly anything. Because people will submit all their claims, but they haven't paid it in yet.
Okay. Courtney, your point is very well taken. It's an item of discussion. But I don't think it's anything that the employees are gonna look at when they decide which way to go here.
No, absolutely not.
In fact, it's almost an advantage to stay with the, the flex plan because you can spend it before you put it in. As opposed to your health savings account where you have to have it deposited to spend it.
You have to have it deposited before you spend it.
That's the big point that Courtney's making here.
Is that the way it is?
That I'm taking from this.
Where we've always done it.
They had to have it. You had to have it before you could spend it.
It's in your account.
It's a bank account, doesn't it?
You gotta check the individual.
Okay, see, I see.
But do you have an employee or an employer?
But it's all individual.
A subsidy?
Yes.
Okay, so, but that's probably put in at the first year.
Put in with each paycheck.
Yeah. It's a match.
It's a match, or it goes in as you do it?
It's a match, but the other thing too with the HSA with the high deductible is, yeah, there's no copay, but when you hit that deductible...
You're done paying.
There's still no copay, so...
You're zero copay.
You're at a hundred percent benefit.
Yeah. Once you hit your deductible.
Well, different plans are different because once you hit that deductible, some plans are, and where I'm at, is you still pay twenty percent until you meet that out-of-pocket. Because there's, there's a window in there of you have to pay your deductible, then you meet that deductible, you get, they pay, company or Wellmark or whatever pays eighty percent, the patient pays twenty, until you meet that out-of-pocket cap as a patient.
Which your other ones have an out-of-pocket cap on them too already.
I suppose we should, I mean, we could certainly have him come, let all the employees know that he's gonna be available and if there's any interest.
Yeah. Pick a day of time and see if we can get him to take a look at it.
Yeah, so we don't really make a decision except for letting him come.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, it'll cost anything, so play and give it a shot.
And if we find that we only have one or two, we...
Then we can make that decision at that time.
Okay, is that agreeable with the board then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are we gonna make a decision on the naturally slim?
Today? I am ready. I was ready. And the thing I don't like about it is it's, you have a three percent weight loss at ten weeks, and then it costs the county. But if it doesn't work after that, that's a lot. And the other thing I look, and my other reason I feel comfortable about not doing it is because we can add this at any time. If six weeks or a month from now I decide, or we decide that, yeah, this, there's things we didn't see that we shouldn't do, maybe should do it, we can add it at any time. So this is not a decision we need to make now, and then we can decide differently at any point.
Yeah, I don't think it's enough benefit to anybody involved, to be quite honest with you. So I'm not for it either at this point in time.
Well, you know, three percent of a person like me or similar to you would weigh two hundred pounds, and that's six pounds, you know, I can vary six pounds in a two-week period anytime. It challenges me. I can go up really easy.
It's easily doing.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes, I agree with what you're saying. I know it's not true, and I should be the first one on it. Anyway. Okay, payables.
Well, I'm just gonna say one other thing about insurance, that two hundred some dollars a month involved comes up to twenty-nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars, twenty-nine hundred dollars a year when you multiply it up for the annual savings. When you look at it a month, multiply it for twelve, it's, that's how much we're saving with HMY. So that decision's been made. Go ahead, Gene.
Okay, payables. Appointment of magistrate, is that just for advertising?
Yeah, we're county estimate for that.
We have to pay, so it comes out of the supervisors then?
Uh, let's see, yeah. Yeah. I don't know, I'm wondering if it maybe should come out of...
Audits?
No. Clerk to the clerk, I don't even know if we have any bills out of there this month, this time. Like maybe out of court administration, Department thirty?
That's kinda what I thought.
Um, if you wanna approve them, I can double-check that and just make sure it's coming out of it. We'll see where we painted in the past. If it's always been coming out of the supervisors, we'll just let it out of there, but it, it might be that it, to me, it makes no sense to be coming out of court, but there might be a reason. Maybe the supervisors are required to post it. I don't know.
That might be. I just thought it was kinda strange it's coming out of supervisors.
I'll take a peek at that.
There's one I didn't pull, but on conservation, I see Dan Hyman giving four seventy for a food plot.
I saw that too.
And I'm, I'm sure an auditor's gonna check that, so I would just make sure that is all really, really clean. Because he's an employee out there.
And I'm assuming it's saving everything out of it, so...
It's probably A okay, but it will be audited.
I saw it too. I'll find that out tonight.
You got conservation, yeah. And I assume it's just great, but I just wanna say that, that will be checked.
And what's it all ask is if that's a reasonable cost for what he did, or if it's the one that, yeah.
Bring that up to the board.
Yeah.
And it might just be a matter of documenting it correctly if that's what...
Yeah.
If you can find that somebody else's got a comparable cost, I guess, to have it in your back pocket, it would be...
Another one on conservation, I had a question.
Or be more specific in the explanation.
Is that one with site electric? It says campground reset. And I thought if that's just going like this, that can be done by our employee, but it says out there pedestal. So I assume that means they totally reset a pedestal, not reset a button.
I don't know if this is it, but that one shelter house, they had to redo the electric line going in there. I'll call it the east shelter house.
Yeah, because they had a fault, they had a fault in there, and they had to redo that.
I guess that's what that was for, but I wasn't sure.
On a ticket it says reset pedestal, so I assume that means, yeah, they reset it.
Probably somebody drove over one, but the thing is...
Now that could be.
You'd have to reset it.
For forty-five bucks, I, I thought it'd be, what, this is forty bucks?
Well, yeah, for forty-five bucks it will have it.
Well, it could've been pulled a power panel off of a building and then re, because it was getting stretched or something too.
I'll go ahead and find that out too.
With what we've had in the past about electrical out there, that, or pushing the thing to the other extreme is what I'm getting at.
Right.
Just kinda get a clarification on that.
I can do that.
He's a really kinda heavy or husky guy.
qualified electrician or staff out there anymore.
I, I just need to pick up and...
My point is, anybody can push a button.
Deal with him.
That's what it is.
Who's he? I wonder who would name him.
And I can add somebody.
Situation?
Tomorrow I do.
Not really too bad.
Okay, any other questions on the payables?
Right in front of the business door in block three, different, the conservation truck on it.
If not, we're in order for motion to approve the payables.
How someone to approve the payables?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the payables. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Okay, next we have, and there's a letter for friends, ah, friends. Partnerships for family are asking for basically a board member. And I, Courtney, talked to this individual, thought I might be, have a conflict being they used to be hollers that knew often I would not have a conflict with that, but I would have a conflict with other, other things that, so I would not wish to be on it. And I think I addressed that with the rest of the survey. And I, I don't know that we have to have, put one on there?
No, it's a request.
It's a request, so I'd be very cautious.
By, by reading the request, they could have any citizens, any citizen of the county do that, basically, so I...
If we had somebody interested, we could appoint them to that.
So I didn't realize if...
I think we don't appoint, if it's somebody else, we don't appoint them.
No, they're, they're requesting a board member.
Okay.
You gotta make out an application or...
Yeah, there is an application here.
I guess my response would be, we appreciate the opportunity to serve, but respectfully decline.
Do we fund this?
No.
Okay. I didn't think so, but I'd have to ask that question.
It's a good question, Dean, because if we were funding it, I would like to have representation.
Yeah.
I think all their money comes pretty well from the state and Fed.
Yeah.
And I think they might have, it might be some local match, but I'm not sure. Tim? I think that's ideal, Neil, or just respectfully decline.
Well, I can email this gal and just tell her that respectfully decline.
And obviously, if any member of this board would like to volunteer, throw their, you're welcome to do it.
Yeah.
Since she asked us.
Okay. Next we have is a candidacy, manning special election.
Okay, special election, city of Manning last May, or last Tuesday, May 2nd. Basically, what they were doing is, they have municipal utilities in there, electric utility, gas, communications, and they were trying to consolidate those all into one. So they have four public measures that they actually voted on. In order for them to pass, each, each public measure needed to pass, and they did. So I don't know if you wanna, I can give you this canvas here. Probably the easiest one. I'll write that down. If you just maybe wanna read the yes, no's, totals are at the bottom down there in the bottom column. That includes the absentees. We had two absentees.
Okay. For public measure A, shall the current board of trustees for the municipal electric utility of the city of Manning in the Carroll County, state of Iowa, be discontinued? Total yes, seventy. Total no, five. Public measure B, if public measure, if public measure A passes, shall the management and control of the municipal electric company of the city of Manning be placed in the board of trustees, consisting of five trustees who serve surge? I just did misspell there. As a board of trustees for the municipal gas utility known as, for the city of Manning. Such board to be known as a board of trustees of Manning Municipal Utilities. Yes, seventy-three, no, four. Public measure C, shall the current board of trustees for the municipal communications utility in the city of Manning, Carroll County, Iowa, state of Iowa, be discontinued? Yes, seventy-one, no, five. Public measure D, if public measure C passes, shall the management and control of the municipal communications utility board of the city of Manning be placed in the board of trustees consisting of five trustees who serve as the board of trustees for the municipal gas utility for the city of Manning, such as board be known as the board of trustees of the Manning Municipal Utilities? Yes, seventy-one, no, four. This has got typos on both places, particularly measure B and D.
Okay. You want to just circle them? Because you guys don't have...
You want pencil or...
That's fine, because you guys don't sign this page.
Okay.
So I can just correct that. That's what happened.
I see each one as a, for separate vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I will move to approve public measure A.
I'll second that motion.
The canvas of it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the canvas of public measure A. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
Oh, it's a roll call.
Is it roll call?
Oh, is it roll call?
I don't know.
We'll do a roll call, that way.
They want each of us to sign separately.
Well, we'll, we'll do it, that way we're covered.
Okay.
Yeah, we gotta sign four times.
Struggles?
Yes.
Shetland?
Yes.
Bach?
Yes.
Dancer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, public measure B, now through the canvas, public measure B, a move that we do.
I'll second it.
Should second it? Any further discussion, if not, roll call?
Miners?
Yes.
Struggles?
Yes.
Shetland?
Yes.
Bach?
Yes.
Dancer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, on public measure C.
Can we make a motion, we accept this?
Okay.
Second.
Then a second, any further discussion, if not, roll call?
Miners?
Yes.
Struggles?
Yes.
Shetland?
Yes.
Bach?
Yes.
Dancer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, on public measure D, I'm with the motion to approve public measure D.
No.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and second, any further discussion, if not, roll call?
Miners?
Yes.
Struggles?
Yes.
Shetland?
Yes.
Bach?
Yes.
Dancer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, I actually, there's a form there that he's got for signature.
Okay, I, I signed that one already, so.
I have three copies of the abstract here, um, cause I have to send one to their attorney, one to the city, and we need one. There's four pages, so I'll have to pass, maybe I'll start one here, and I'll start one here. Sign these, I guess. I'll better wait. Did you sign all four pages? I still want you to.
Trying to get out of it.
You didn't push hard. Need a, a carbon paper.
Wait until I.
Doesn't even have that stuff anymore, I suppose it's around somewhere.
Wait until I see Harvey the next time.
Keep it simpler.
Yeah, this is the first election that I've been involved with that had many, that many public measures.
Well, I can see what I haven't, what they're doing is just kind of dissolving one and communication and shoving together the gas board.
Yeah, it makes sense, but, uh, I didn't realize that they each had to be.
Well, I mean, I think the problem is they're, it's basically the same boredom almost every one of them.
It, a lot of times, it's at least three or four of the members are common amongst all of them.
Sounds like it'll be more efficient that way too, so that's a good thing.
I think they're trying to get any one manager to, is that correct?
Um, you know, the question that brought up to me about how, were they gonna cut staff because of this, and I said, oh, boy, I don't have any idea.
Probably the five total.
Well. They just elect, they just hired a kid to do their electric, I know him.
I, I.
I remember that.
The problem is, uh, the gas guy is, which is, can't speak, you know, he's getting up there. But he's close to seventy-five.
Of course, they've been running an electric manager for most, a little while, quite a while.
That was only a year ago, wasn't it?
That was right around, uh, primary time last year, a little short of a year.
Those kind of deals kinda shock everybody.
Got a hairy kid out of the municipality of Coon. Just going that way.
I'm probably the only one left on that too.
You paid a dollar a letter for this meeting. You paid a dollar a letter for this meeting, give me your name.
You big name.
Name of me, that's why you want to do that.
That's right.
That guy missed the. Oh, that guy.
That guy.
Did I miss one?
Missed one.
If I've got a first cousin, I'm gonna change my name to his last name, Schwarzenbruber. That's a long one.
I was in high school, I, my maiden name's Bellinghausen, and they had to put my name in, kind of an heart on my back.
Oh, it could go across.
Yeah, several shirts with a name was kind of a.
You can have that one, that was complete.
Revo.
That one's complete.
My wife had one too, and I probably should've sung it, checks faster than shorthand.
Then there's that. The billing guy, Kutschenmeister.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good name, do they have for by the letter?
I gotta make a phone call to him Wednesday.
It seems like it's gonna take us a long time, but we're, we're not that late.
Gene, um, we authorize you to sign papers for, um, another view, and I, I see the security entitled, the abstract's got brought up, does, does anything happen?
We, uh, we signed some documents, uh, I did it Wednesday before I left.
Yeah, they're still sitting on my desk, I have one.
And I got an email, um, that Barry, John sent to Barry, that everything's sitting in, ready for, at the clerk's or auditor's office. And Barry responded back, he says, yes, I know that, cause I talked to Courtney, cause I had an issue with the first resolution. After that, we redo, we did, redid the second one, and then, but we have not heard anything, so I don't know what's, and now it's, it's their end.
So, our responses, show me the money or what?
That's basically the next step, because they don't, there's nowhere for them to sign on that, uh, deed or that, uh, real, that declaration of value.
Well, good, sounds like you made good progress on it.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's.
It sounds like maybe John will be getting the monies, you know, maybe the monies will be going to him and, so, I'll let you know as soon as I.
Great.
I get anything.
Yeah, that we know it's all finalized, but I think everything on our end is done. Okay, next we have is fireworks permit for Carroll County Club for, uh, July fourth to the rain date of July eighth.
I'd make a motion to approve fireworks display permit, second that motion.
Been moved and second, any further discussion, if not, all those in favor, signify with a C and I.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
Did you all see the advertisement for the first fireworks vendor in the paper? Coming to a tent near you, Iowa Fireworks Company.
In Orange City?
Yeah, I just seen it.
Courtney, you wanna see this from over in your office then?
Oh, they, they them long get that organized the way they.
Well, yes or no, um, we can be in here, I know that, we don't want that probably when you go to.
It's kinda interesting, you can buy the fireworks, but it's up to the city to, whether you can use them or not.
Yeah. If you wanna make sense, though, you got, let's say, oh, a drought, and then, why would you let?
Or a low moisture, where you don't wanna, yeah.
Well, like I said, out in Nebraska, that week of the Fourth of July, there's, people actually stay home when it's dry. They're not gonna shoot their fireworks on, but they stay home to watch their house, so the dead doesn't go up, you know, when the neighbor's shooting off.
Fireworks.
Yeah.
Make sure none of them get out of control.
Yeah.
Okay, next we have manure management updates, we have Quant Farms, Joe Quant, section twenty-seven of Pleasant Valley Township, and he has made no changes to his master matrix. Manure management plan, okay. Many reports. Dean?
Oh, real, sorry, real quick, these new ones don't have section and township, so I've been looking them up and writing them down at the bottom.
Okay.
So you can, so this one is the east half of the northwest quarter, section twenty-seven in Pleasant Valley, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sorry.
That's right. Um, I didn't have anything last week, I just got this, I don't know, does anybody, everybody get this? The Elkhorn Watershed. It's pretty interesting, there's three, they highlight three people in here, this is basically done by, um, the Agriculture's Clean Water Alliance, um, they're, they're with the NC, or the, uh, County Soil and Water Conservation Board, but this is, these are three individuals up by the river that have done, uh, bioreactors, saturated buffers, cover crops and stuff like that. This money is basically coming from the Iowa Soybean Association, so it's, if you haven't seen it, I'm gonna pass it around, it is pretty interesting. Um, what's really, some of the stuff that is ha, actually happening. Um, I don't have any, I didn't have anything more last week, this week, I've got conservation board meeting tonight, um, and I plan on going to Highway thirty meeting tomorrow, if anybody else planning to go to that?
Oh, hey, I did see something on.
I got another meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, there too.
Thank, yeah, I'm good.
I'll probably head over there if I can get a ride.
See Neil?
Best names tomorrow.
Neil?
Um, yes. Last week I had the, uh, radio newspaper, which I did, of course, um, got called out on drain seventy-seven, and we all talked about that already. Um, I also only got a call concerning the fricky building, and I didn't get a return, the gal I'm working with there is, uh, out. And then, uh, we had a dust issue with one of our gravitons, and I talked, uh, that we're going out of it. Another county, and our engineers got together and got that taken care of, so, and this week I have a safety meeting, safety committee meeting on Wednesday.
Marty? Um, basically, last Thursday and Friday is up in Orange City with Gene, we had the, uh, ice act retreat, kinda getting ready for the, uh, tall session, which is gonna be the twenty-third and twenty-fourth of August in, in Des Moines. Toured, uh, Pizza Ranch, our headquarters up there, kinda interesting, also watched them make some wooden shoes, uh, didn't buy any, thought they looked kinda uncomfortable. But it's kinda interesting going through it, uh, went through.
Is that automated?
No, they've got an old, it's an old turning lathe that they use, and then they have a.
It's neat the way they do, no.
It, it, it's pretty simple, but it, it was.
It's not the old hand.
No, they don't carve them by hand, they, they got a, like a turning lathe to turn the actual shoe, and then they've got like an auger bit that they go in and drill out the inside.
So is it more like a, uh, clog or something like that, as opposed to a shoe?
Yeah, it's clogged, basically.
Well, they, they did get it down in there though, but what he does is they got a, whatever size they wanna use, they've got that shoe.
Black wood.
Black wood in there, and they stick a black wood over here, and as that turns, that just goes around and follows that, that contour of the old one.
Yeah.
Makes it, so then he takes it off there, and he goes to this other machine, which is like a router, but it's just with a long arm, I mean, this, this equipment was probably, you wouldn't, you wouldn't want OSHA showing up. Anyway, uh, it had like a boring bit that they, and there again, they followed, designed another one with a blunt end, and then a bore on this side, and he'd go in there, and then he would take that, then, then he'd take that shoe and tip it, then he'd go in there this way. So he follow that pattern.
Then template that would follow.
Yeah, and after that, then they, they take, somebody takes a, sands it down, finishes it or whatever. But it was, uh, it was interesting.
Did they paint those all different colors then?
Well, by painting it, but they use, um, bosom wood, right?
Molson wood, yeah.
Yeah, and the reason they do that is, part of it is, when they have these prays and stuff, all of that noise, they, they get that clog. They've got that, gets that, that certain sound to it.
And the reason they wear wooden shoes is because over in the Netherlands, is basically with the, the moisture, they couldn't wear leather shoes, cause it gets saturated, so they'd wear wooden shoes. And then it would have.
So did you buy a pair?
No, I didn't buy.
You have a chance to stand unique in the crowd. You missed it.
You'd be taller.
You could make them right.
The other thing, that's kinda interesting, we went to the courthouse that eve, on Thursday evening, and they were talking about, uh, Orange City's county seat right now. And anyway, Hayward used to be the county seat, and then they, back in the eighteen hundreds, there was kind of a rivalry there. And so they actually went to Hayward, stole the safe out of the courthouse there, took it back to Orange City, but they didn't get all the way back across the river, cause it's too, the ice wasn't thick enough. So they just left it there, and then they went back and got it, so it's kinda interesting just here in the history, in the courthouse up there, I'll tell you what, it's an old courthouse, but it is a nice, loud, old woodwork, and it is a big courthouse. And I didn't realize that, like Sioux County, there's thirty-five thousand people, Orange City's like six thousand people, but it's kinda interesting.
Thirty-five thousand people in Sioux County?
Yeah, yeah.
But they have, they have, you know, they've got Orange City at six thousand, and they got Sioux Center.
Yeah.
Which is a, just about the same size, and then they got Hayward, so they've got some towns that are, got four to five to six thousand.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah.
It was interesting.
That courthouse was, uh, really unique, and then he said they put, uh, geothermal air conditioner a couple years ago.
Yeah.
And the thing, I couldn't get that, she said they have to fill this one thing with ice every.
Yeah, or to keep it cool enough.
And I thought, now, okay, after I got, we left, I got thinking, oh, how much ice is she talking about?
Yeah, I don't know.
But I did ask Danny what they stuck into that, geothermal, and this is mostly for air conditioning, not necessarily for heat, over a million bucks. And so I think it's because the way they had to run that lines through that courthouse.
Older courthouse.
Yeah, that's what he said.
More challenging.
Their, uh, they, the courtroom, they had remodeled, that was just beautiful. And, uh, their board meeting was beautiful, they had the, where they actually sit like here, and everybody faces out.
Which is kinda like the city over here.
Yeah, and, uh, but it was, my wife commented about the floors were just like immaculate, they were shiny, they just shine. Marble floors, all marble floors. So it was, it was interesting, so.
Sounds like a cool, cool courthouse.
It was, it was very, very unique.
So, that's all I had last week, and then this week I've got Wesco board meeting this evening, uh, solid waste, uh, tomorrow morning, region twelve on Thursday, and then probably looking at drain eighteen with Dave and Rich sometime this week. That's all I have, okay, Rich?
Um, Larry Schultz, drain eighteen, uh, we communicated with him over the weekend, we're gonna go take a look this week. Uh, last week I didn't have much of anything going on, it's really quiet, uh, this week, tomorrow I have ambulance meeting tomorrow afternoon, and, uh, the legislative forum will be, uh, this Thursday at the Beryl Building, it'll be the last, a makeup from the one they missed for the end of the last session, that'll be this Thursday.
And that's at the depot.
At the depot at eleven or ten, I don't know exact time.
Thursday?
Oh, really? Oh, I thought it was, uh, noon.
I have twelve, I have twelve o'clock, you're right, it's twelve o'clock.
Yeah, we'll make that one. And I gotta look at my email, but I.
Yeah. So that's about it for this week.
Okay. Okay, uh, last week I had, uh, basically, just, uh, the supervisor retreat, uh, like Marty said, we went through and set up some tentative topics and give, uh, direction to people, try to contact and get that lined up. Uh, we did go through, uh, talk about things that happened in legislature this year, you know, what won and what didn't with our lobbyists. And then we did talk about our lobbyist contract, which we did not, we do, uh, we, uh, we were given a request for a leave of absence for one year, um, and, uh, we did grant that, and we are gonna work with the remaining Jamie and Lucas for our support this year. And we're being paying them amount that we have, that we, uh, I guess it's kinda up to the executive board, they're gonna put a contract together to get back to us, so, um, and it, like I said, the tours were really neat and stuff, and I thought they were doing very well. The other thing I did do last week, I did send you guys all an email, uh, and I did send an email copy, I paced some of those points, and did send it to this potter bomb, uh, about ten o'clock at night on Wednesday, that was Wednesday night, I think, and by midnight I had a response back from, but he received it, so I was kinda impressed with that. This issue is strictly for one center that's pushing this, because they overbuilt last year or two years ago. Clear new addition now without permission for new beds, and it's the one that's always giving us static, so. Anyway, this week I have, um, I have, uh, CADC on Tuesday, and then also I'm gonna try to make the legislative, uh, thing on Thursday, and I think that's about all I have, unless something else comes up as I go along there. So, uh, should be a short week for everybody. Courtney?
Next week.
Have anything for next week yet?
Not yet.
See? We may have a real short meeting, huh?
I thought this one was gonna be short.
Oh, ain't bad.
Holy, sure.
Can you make a copy of that for me, Marty?
Yeah. We do a card here for Manning Community, Manning Community Foundation, that's addressed to Carroll County Supervisor on Saturday, May thirteenth, beginning at nine AM, the Manning House Farm Heritage Park is celebrating the honors birthday of the Les Houser Farmstead. A breakfast on the farm, uh, begins at nine AM and ends at ten thirty. Free William offering for that.
There you go.
All other activities are free, come and see the rest restored aloft in the farm barn, and check presentations at eleven o'clock. Manning Community Foundation, uh, sent by Fred Adama, uh, and that is on the thirteenth, which is this coming Saturday, and I know I am tied up. I will not be there. I've got a baby sister, two young grandsons. Okay, any comments from those in attendance? If there's nothing else, we're in order for motion to adjourn.
So move, second.
Been moved and second, all those in favor, signify with a C and I. Contrary, motion carried.